Good to go.
Good, Jim.
All good.
Alright, so being Wednesday, March twenty twenty three, six in the eight P M. I'm having fun. I'm gonna call the Bridgewater Planning Board and we need to order. And pursuant to the governor's order, that's my fault, twenty twenty. And then, uh, this is re-open meeting, I'm asking about section thirty sixteen eighteen. And the government's not. Imposing strict limitation number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting on the Bridgewater Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No unprecedented penalties and wonders of the public to be permitted. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. The meeting is being recorded and within forty-eight hours will post link on our town's website and social media page. The following members of participating in the Bridgewater Planning Board, Unpapped Justice of the Chair, Mr. Raymond A. Jimmy. Miss Aston Roadhouse, Mr. Michael McDonald, Vice Chair. Mr. Stephen Keller, Mr. Ted Haley, Associate, and Miss M. James Begone, Associate. There will be all votes to be rolled out. Uh, the following Bridgewater Town staff are also joining us remotely this evening. Mr. Bob Really, the Community Economic Development Director, Mr. Shane O'Brien, the County Bridgewater Planner. Mr. Greg Tansey, the County Bridgewater Town Engineer. And Mr. Stephen Salavi, the County Bridgewater Building Commissioner. Everyone's making a move at this time. Boards make the unmuted, the whole meeting, and as I was saying, the chairman of the project, Mr. Jones makes the unmuted. It's a project in a tough public hearing, and we do have one this evening, our next, um. And Jim, I am, we asked it. If the project's a public hearing, you know, lots of couple of. The way the hearing will work is last of the participant to the applicant to present their. Their plan, the board will ask questions, and then we'll open up to.
However, in a difficult time hearing you.
You have a map, is that better or not?
No.
Is that better now, close to it now?
Yes.
The following Bridgewater Town staff, if it's really, you heard all that?
Yes.
Alright, so if the project is a public hearing and allows a public comment, we have to use the chat feature to ask you a question. By listening to your name, your address, and your question. The host, who's Mr. O'Brien this evening, will recognize the questions in order. You can use the raise my hand feature in the participant menu, and you'll be unmuted when the host recognizes you. Again, please take your name and address for the record. You're in the phone, you can now stand by to raise your hand. Ready to do the public hearing? This is one forty-five with the street map eighty-eight, lot twenty-one. We have proposed by sixteen thirty-five Broadway Realty Trust, this is safe plan review under section ten point six. Under the Bridgewater zoning ordinance, with the way this pursuant to section three, six point three, six point three point five in the Bridgewater zoning ordinance. So, uh, Mr. O'Brien, you did receive the green cards, correct?
You're muted, Shane, Shane.
I apologize. Uh, yes, we did receive the green cards. Do you want me to pull up the, uh, the, um, public notice ad, Pat? And share it on the screen so you can read it?
Um, if you want me to read it or show it, whatever you prefer.
Um, whatever you prefer, yeah, um, I'll share it.
Let's see how long this.
Not too bad.
So it's a public hearing notice by the Bridgewater Planning Board on Wednesday, March right twenty twenty-three, eight, six thirty P M. The Bridgewater Planning Board will be conducting a public hearing via Zoom. On, uh, Tuesday, my sixteen thirty-five Broadway Realty Trust for a site plan approval under section ten point six of the Bridgewater zoning ordinance. With a waiver request pursuant to six point three point five of the Bridgewater zoning ordinance. And property located at one forty-five Main Street, and one forty-five Winter Street, excuse me, Route eighty-eight, lot twenty-one. The project proposes to construct two new commercial buildings, six thousand square feet each, and associate infrastructure of the parcel of land. The project will require Strongpoint Engineering Solutions, and on file, the Community Economic Development Office at sixty-six Center Square, Bridgewater, one zero two three two four. And online, there's an online address to access the public hearing via Zoom, please click the agenda. Please click on the agenda from the first twenty twenty-three, the planning board meeting. So that's the public hearing notice. Before we turn the vote into the applicant, Mr. O'Brien, you have it.
Uh, I don't have anything at this time, uh, but I can, um. Eric Diaz is here, um, on behalf of Strongpoint Engineering, and I believe he will be giving the presentation.
Yes, sir.
Michael.
Mr. Diaz, you have the floor, go ahead when you're ready, sir.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, for the record, Eric Diaz, Registered Professional Engineer with Strongpoint Engineering Solutions. Uh, with me tonight, but off camera in my office is Mr. Stephen Kennedy, uh, who is the applicant on the project, or representing the applicant. And Stephanie Holman in my office is also here, so if you see me looking off camera or getting prompt from someone, that's why. Um, I'm gonna share my screen if that's okay, and we'll just walk through the plans real quick, and then I'll turn it over to the board for any questions. Uh, Shane, can I get rights?
You're all good.
Good to go, okay. Okay, can everybody see the plan set?
We can now.
Excellent. Um, so first, by way of orientation, this is one forty-five Winter Street. I'm gonna go to the locus plan and zoom in a little bit. Um, obviously Bedford Street, Route eighteen is down here, uh, Winter Street runs this way. And we have frontage on Winter Street here and on Romney Road. Uh, just by way of orientation, the Chata Box Restaurant is down here where my cursor is, and Crisco's is back here. Um, so I know everybody's familiar with those landmarks in town. Um, the site itself currently houses a single-family dwelling and a couple of detached sheds and garages. Um, it is accessed only through Romney Road at this time, there is no access to the site from Winter Street. Um, the site is very much wooded, you can see on the plan where we show the tree line. Um, going through about, I'd say about half the site, the rest of the site is pretty open, uh, gravel driveway, things of that nature. Um, there is a pretty significant grade change across the site. The site starts at a high grade over here in the northern or northwestern corner. Stormwater drainage flows, if you follow my cursor down here, into the back southwestern corner here. Um, you can see on this plan, we have peppered this place with test pits. Uh, good news for us is that we've got great soil conditions out here, a lot of sandy material, um, and a lot of good depth to groundwater, which certainly serves our drainage design as we move through things. Uh, should note that this area is gonna be served by a private septic, uh, but it does have municipal water. Um, moving through to the proposal, as we said in the public notice, I'm gonna zoom in a little bit. We're looking at two six thousand square foot buildings, about four bays each. Um, I know that Mr. O'Brien has put out a staff report, which I've had an opportunity to look at, that notes that we are compliant with zoning, uh, we do meet the parking requirements, uh, both by the bylaw and the ADA requirements in town. Um, we are seeking a couple of waivers, and I'll just touch base on those, they are largely with regard to the layout and the grading. Um, what they regard our retaining walls, you can see where my cursor is here, this line with the Vs in it. Uh, represents a retaining wall on this side of the project. Um, we are seeking waivers for the height of the retaining wall, the type of the retaining wall, and the location of it being within the front yard, um, screening buffer. And then on the backside of the project, we do have another retaining wall proposed, uh, right adjacent to our stormwater management basin over here. I'm gonna zoom out just a little bit so I can navigate. Um, coming to our grading and drainage plan, this shows our stormwater plan a little bit better. Um, all the stormwater from the site in the existing condition is coming down to this corner, that's where we're sending it in the proposed condition. Um, we do have an infiltration, a subsurface infiltration basin under the parking lot that is gonna collect our rooftop. Recharge that back into the ground, the basin itself is an infiltration basin, so we're getting a lot of recharge back into the ground of that. And if you look through our drainage report, I won't, um, I'll spare you the gory details. But basically, it shows that we are matching our flows and our volumes as required between the pre and the post. Um, one thing I should have noted in my layout discussion is that traffic, uh, the site will be accessed or is proposed to be accessed off of Romney Road, we have a twenty-four foot egress here, a twenty-four foot egress here. You can follow the arrows, but our traffic patterns lead around the building. Um, it's one, uh, one way in this direction to allow for the grade change that we need in the retaining wall. Uh, but we do show that we can get emergency vehicles through the site adequately. Um, any delivery trucks, things like that, so we'll have a good flow through the site, no problem. Um, moving on, we have provided a full erosion sedimentation control plan equipped with construction entrances, uh, stockpile areas, um, hay bales, erosion control, um, considerations, things like that. We have provided a full landscaping plan, which is escaping me, but there it is, uh, that meets the town standards for landscaping and buffering requirements. With the exception of the retaining wall waiver that we touched on briefly. Um, we provided a photometric plan for the site that shows that all of our lighting is gonna be dark sky compliant. It's all L E D, uh, we've got zero-foot candles at the property line, so we're not lighting up the neighbors or anything like that. Um, and then the rest of the plan set is just standard construction details, details on the subsurface infiltration basin, things like that. Um, one additional thing I'd like to touch base on, if you refer to the cover letter that we provided. Um, just to give you all a sense of what it is that we're looking at for architecture. Uh, the second page are photos of another facility that the applicant owns in Rainham, and this will be modeled very much after that. So the same colors, uh, same finishes, things like that, here's a view of the front of it here. Um, and a view of the backside of the facility over here, so this is pretty much what we're looking at constructing in Bridgewater. Um, those are the finer points, I know Shane has provided a staff report, we reviewed it, I think it's pretty favorable. Uh, we have not seen comment from the town engineer yet, but I'm sure it's forthcoming. Um, and that's it, Mr. Chairman, I'm glad to turn it back over to you and go at your direction.
That's great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Um. Shane, is there anything you'd like to add before I open up the board questions?
Yeah, I'll just make some notes in my, uh, for my staff report, and I can pull that up. Um. So the, the applicant did provide, um, information like they stated, uh, in regards to the infiltration basin, uh, we do appreciate the photometric plan. Um, because, you know, we do have projects that are concerns of lighting. Um, and we wanna make sure that the, uh, it's downward lighting and it's compliant with our dark skies. Um, in terms of circulation, uh, we do have a concern of the adequacy of Romney Road as is, um, for access. You know, i- it's a small private way, and i- it, there may be some difficulty accessing it. Um, two-way traffic off of that road. Um, in terms of, uh, questions about the architecturals, uh, we, we do, we'd like some information about the material for the facade. Um, we're not asking for the board to mandate a color scheme by any means, but just make sure that there's information, um, provided by the, in the architectural plans of um, what the applicant is looking to do. I know, I, we appreciate the, uh, displays, and I, I've driven by the, the one in Rainham. So I'm aware of the design and kind of how that, uh, the circulation is over there. Um, I did have a, a comment, and I did provide the staff report over to the applicant as well, so let me share my screen quickly. Um, and a concern about a re- uh, relocation of a do not enter sign. Um, there is a do not enter sign over here on the one-way portion, um, but I figured by the this two-way traffic over here and then one-way traffic over here, I, I figured that, that one-way do not enter sign or an additional do, you know, and when do not enter sign should be provided here, because, um, I have concerns about, um, a conflict in case if someone's coming one way, and by the time someone understands that's a do not enter area, is that, um, you know, they'll see the sign too late. Um, so that was just kind of my little, uh, display for that, um, in regards to screening. Uh, I have a question about, on the landscaping plan, there is around the border of the site, uh, information about, um, trees or as trees displayed as a screening. Uh, I just wanna make sure that if that's existing trees being protected, or if those are new trees to be provided those locations. And if the applicant or the board is interested in some sort of tree easement in that area, whether it be five or ten feet, I, you know. Is, I just have a question in terms of protection of those trees, um, as displayed on the plans, and how the board would kind of approach that, because I, I don't know the density per se of the trees over there, and if that kind of screening shows is, is a protection for like one tree or two trees. But that's a discussion we can have, um, in terms of screening, I know there's been, we've gotten some public comments. Um, and I do have some concerns about the retaining wall and kind of the display of it, um, as well as the chain link fence, um, we do have um, new items in our zoning ordinances that do, uh, feature a lot of prominence in terms of the importance of screening. Um, so instead of a chain link fence, maybe a vinyl or a wood fence in that area. Um, and then from my staff report, I provided some information based on, uh, our performance standards. And I provided comments to the board and as well as the applicant for each item. Uh, that follows up the, uh, performance standards for the larger projects. Um, in regards to the waiver request, um, you know, I'm okay with, um, the waiver request for the traffic report, but, um, in terms of the screening and the retaining wall waivers, um, I do have some concerns, but I, I, I think that if going back and forth with the board, I think we can kind of create a resolution to either allow for some of these waiver requests with some conditions. Um, but I, I think we need to kind of tighten up, uh, the design and the display of those, uh, the elevations of the, uh, retaining wall, so those are my comments at this time, and if the board has any questions, I, I'm happy to answer any.
Mr. Driscoll. I have a comment and a question. Uh, does the applicant have rights to Romney Road?
Um, I'll, I'll field that question. Um, I believe the applicant does have rights to Romney Road, the existing house that's there has been there for more than sixty years, and it's only been ever been accessed off of Romney Road. Um, so I believe that in and of itself gives the applicant prescriptive rights to use Romney Road to access the property. Um, additionally, and I don't, I don't propose to be an attorney, and I don't know the exact name of the law, but Romney Road is a private road. And on a private road, the abutters on each side own to the, the center line through their frontage. Um, so I do believe that the applicant does have rights to Romney Road.
I, I'm just, you know, and, and Mr. O'Brien and I have looked at it, I mean, all the deeds into other parcels along Romney Road specifically, have their lots called out for having rights of access to Romney Road. Uh, this, the lot in question here has not ever been recited, um, and, and you're very, very well might have some legal rights. Uh, but I think that in fairness to the board, that should be presented to them, that in fact you do have rights to the road before they get too deep into considering this.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm aware of the, um, the, the plan that Mr. Really is, um, referring to. Um, I have seen it, I frankly, I don't believe it, it holds much merit, but we are coordinating this with legal counsel. Um, and we will get an opinion from legal counsel that we can provide to the board.
I, I'm not on mute, I can't, no. Um, I think it's important that we see that there are rights to the road, and, and that the rights also allow for the road to be upgraded if needed. Um. But I think that's very important. Um, Mr. Diaz, in regards to the waivers.
Yes, sir.
I went up to the site today, and right off of Winter Street, probably about ten feet in, there's a nice stone wall and and some trees there, and, and we require a buffer strip between zoning, zoning districts of, of ten feet in width. Um. I know you're trying to maximize the site, but if you took off one of those garage bays and shifted that parking to the left, would that ease the, ease the grading, put in, in the need for an eight-foot retaining wall? And also shift that parking and allow for a buffer along with the street?
Um, we pulled the plan and took a look.
Well, I think, I think, oh, yeah, you know, there wasn't enough houses behind it, there wasn't enough houses to cross the street. We do have that buffering requirement, um. So I think, I think that, um, you know, I, first of all, the, the eight-foot concrete wall, I think, I grew chains, probably, I think, coming from the street. Um, this, it does somebody soften that will plant things and reduce their height down to our six-foot, uh, maximum height. And shifting that parking lot, um, away from with the street to provide a screening and a buffer for those, those things from the other side.
Sure, um, that, that's an alternative that we can, that we can take a look into certainly, and, um, and, and get back to you on the feasibility of that and, and what that would do to impact the site and our need for waiver requests and things like that.
It just, it just, it just seems that a lot of these waivers are just being driven by the, the sheer fact that every, you know, possible, it's, it's just you get the biggest buildings on there, you can, and I get it from a financial perspective, but if you can cut the size down a little bit, make the site a lot nicer, I think that'd be better for everybody.
Understood.
And again, that reiterate, we need to, you need to demonstrate that you have the rights to that road, and that you have, in addition to the rights, you have the rights to upgrade it if needed.
Okay.
Um, other board questions?
Uh, more so a comment. We blunt, uh, you know, whether they have the rights or not, uh, I think this project is coming in on Robbie Road, it's probably a bad, uh, Winter Street should be the, the access point for the site. I think we would most likely be doing a disservice to the residents further down in that road if we were to approve a, a project like this that accesses the Romney Road. Uh, so I, I'd like to see a redesign that, that enters via Winter Street. I don't think their road is capable of dealing with the traffic that's gonna come from this. Uh, I think it's gonna get torn up real easy, and it's gonna be hell on the residence from down that street.
Mike, Michael, just for clarification, when you say residence, there's one residence on Romney Road, do you mean the owners offer on the road? Or do you mean the residence on Winter Street, just so I'm clear?
Uh, both, both in that case.
Yeah, I just wanna note that, that portion of Romney Road as well is in a, uh, business B district, I think, any, as displayed on the site plans. Um, north of this property is when, uh, this, there are, there is residential properties, I guess, on Romney Road. But, uh, typically on Winter Street is where most of the residential properties are located.
Good to know, thank you.
Other board questions?
I'll just, uh, comment that I think, uh, both the chair and Mr. McDonald made some good points, I think there, there is a good argument for some redesign here, but we also need, uh, Mr. Tansey's, uh, uh, report before we even go forward on this at all, I think.
Other board questions, staff questions, comments?
Yeah, I think they, that, that they can start, uh, before we start going for waivers on, on on your, uh, retaining walls, I think there's other way to, other ways to build retaining walls and make them attractive, um. Just by building a solid wall and putting a facing, facing on it to make it look like a block wall, um, with fencing on top, so. Um, and, and I can speak from experience that I've done it, we, you know, we did it on a, on a site. Um, and my walls were anywhere between six feet high, and they went as high as twenty-four feet, and the walls looked beautiful, actually. Um, and I do have pictures if, uh, people really wanna see it. I'd really like to see a, kind of a different design of the, the buildings themselves, the, these standing seam metal buildings seem to be popping up everywhere. And, um, the pictures that you showed us versus the hand sketches that you put in really don't match, uh, you know, you had a, a water line on the, on the front of the building on the one that you showed us, you don't have it on the one here. Um, I know that they're for lack of a better term, cheaper to build because they're all put together, but I, I just, I wish they could come up with something else on a standing metal seam cladded building. Um. On this, and I think you need to, you need, uh, and I would agree that maybe you should shrink the buildings down and put a little bit more buffer on Winter Street. That's it for now, I mean, other than that, I can see that they'll need some screening, typical screening, and I, and I don't think you have enough landscape screening on this on this property, I know, I know you may be meeting our zoning regs, but I think you should get a little bit more generous uh, with your screening. That's all I have right now.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Geller, anybody else on the board? Anybody else on the town staff at this point?
Uh, no comments, I think at this time, I, I think we kind of brought up some of our concerns and, uh, some of our comments on the project at this time.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think the main thing is the screening on Winter Street and the buffer between, between the districts, and then at, o- obviously rights to access and rights to be able to upgrade that access, so. Um, with that being said, are there any members of the public that wish to speak on this project at this time? We have a Joe.
Oh, if you could just raise your virtual hand and then we'll we'll recognize you once we, uh, get to you. So.
So, so you do your control on the screen, so, but now, why don't you take over with the comments?
Sure, um, we have a Joe with their hand raised, if you would like to, uh, state your name, address, and, uh, provide some comment.
Yeah, hi, thanks, everybody, this is, uh, Joe Nichols, my wife Kristen, we live at one thirty Winter Street, we're diagonally across, uh, from the property. So I appreciate the board, Shane, Patrick, um, and the others' comments, um. I mean, look, we, we, we realize where we live, we abut a business, uh, area. Um, we've interacted very, um, very well with the adjacent businesses thus far. We just would, and anything frankly, the property on that lot right now is in, has frankly been in disrepair for quite some time now. So any redevelopment and improvement of the property is well appreciated. Um, I, I just would be, we, we like to reiterate the comments of Patrick and Shane and others that we would appreciate whatever, um, impact our comments would have on, uh, a buffer zone, uh, a this was said before by somebody, but a aesthetically pleasing retaining wall or environmental friendly buffer from the property would be appreciated, um, you know, in respect to property values, et cetera, from the adjacent residential area, so, again. This was spoken by, by others already, but I just wanna reiterate as a resident who lives within thirty seconds walking distance, it would be appreciated, you know, if those, you know, comments could be incorporated into the design, so, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Nichols. I mean, you know.
Yeah, yes, I believe we had, uh, Tom O'Keefe, um, who raised his hand, so you can speak to him.
How, how are you? I'm actually at one forty Winter Street, my mother and I are on this call too, we're directly across the street from this, um, this, this lot. So I'm gonna echo everybody else, and what, what, uh, Joe next door said as well as, and somebody else on the board is our biggest concern is the, um, the buffer and blocking this, um, visually on Winter Street. Having to retain a wall that looks visually appalling, plus other trees that can block it off would be amazing. That as long, and I know somebody else brought up something that I actually feel that, and I agree a hundred percent with, is moving the seven lots for parking to give a bit, uh, more of a buffer for trees and landscaping would be ideal. Because i- it is gonna affect our property value, and plus, like I said, I work from home, I actually see this right from my office directly. So having something that visually looks like it's part of the community, I think it's, it'll go a long way, so that's my point of view on it.
Alright, thank you. We have, uh, I, Castillo, Shane, right?
Castillo. That is correct, and then we do have the applicant raising their hand, um, so we'll let, um, the member of the public speak, and then.
Yeah.
Hi, good evening, I am on twenty, one twenty-five Winter Street, and we are right behind the property, and we've actually we can clearly see all the markers of the property that have been placed.
I'm just speaking in.
I'm sorry?
Could you just state your name, you, you just mentioned your address, could you state your name so we have it for the record, please?
Eliana Castillo.
Thank you.
Yes, so, um, we are directly behind, and our, um, house is very close to, um, so we, we're talking in the back. And we can clearly see all the markers which are in our, basically in our backyard, my concerns are, the parking is gonna be directly behind us. Um, there, the, uh, there's really not, no tree density in that area. Um. Also, the, um, the drainage was mentioned, which is towards this side as well. And, um, traffic behind the, uh, the buildings are, are going to probably affect us, I'm, I'm wondering. the, uh, the buildings are, are going to probably affect us. I'm, I'm wondering how much that traffic would be? And, uh, what kind of, um, the property height, because it will affect our privacy completely. So I, um, just wanted that to be taken into consideration.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Castillo.
Thanks.
Why don't we go to Tom next?
Uh, yep. So, uh, my name is Tom Holmes. I live at one forty-four Winter Street. Um, so we, even though our house is set in the back, our end of our driveway going onto Winter Street, it looks, is almost directly across from Romney Road. Um, so one question I had is, um, I wasn't sure. It looks like from the picture, it's, is it a one-story building or is it a two-story building?
The one story.
So one story. Okay. I wasn't sure, um, what we're going to do. And the second question is, um, uh, do we, does the, um, applicant have any businesses that are, are planning on going in there yet? Or is this just more space? Because my feeling is that Bridgewater already has a lot of development going on Route eighteen and a lot of buildings are for lease. No one's moving into them that I see. So my, my thought is, um, do we really need more buildings to be developed? You know, so close to the residential area when there's so much already to be let on to on Route eighteen. It's just, I don't want more development being built, um, with just, you know, for lease signs waiting for someone to move in. You know, basically solving a problem that doesn't exist. That's it.
Was the homes are all set?
Yes, thank you so much.
Shane, Mr. Diaz, the only one remaining?
That is cor- uh, we have, uh, we have someone under an iPhone who has, uh, their hand raised. So I can ask to unmute them if you would like, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Shane.
All right, iPhone, if you could state your name and your address. You can provide some comment.
Nancy Prisco. Um, my husband, Stephen, and I own, uh, eight Romney Road, Prisco's Market.
Okay.
Um, so we just came into this meeting. Um, so we didn't hear a lot of the um, beginning. Um, our biggest concerns with the project is that it is on eight Romney Road and eight Romney Road is private. Um, so I guess our biggest thoughts are he's going to be using the road, the contractors that he's going to rent to are going to use the road, and then who takes care of that road? Um, Prisco's, we have been taking care of the road. Um, and then some of the other residents take care of it, but if he's renting to whoever, they're not going to take care of it. Um, I mean, it's not a huge road, especially up by that area. So.
So Mr. Prisco, earlier in the meeting, we, that, that you weren't on for, we asked the applicant to demonstrate that they have rights to the road before we go much further with it. And that they have rights to improve the road. So they have to, that's one of the re- that's one of the requests we made to them already this evening. If that, if that helps, if that helps answer your question.
Mr. Chairman, Steve Prisco, uh, eight Romney Road. Um, back when, what my wife just said, we just got home from work. We're all for business. We need more good business in Bridgewater. I know it's a difficult spot, Winter Street with some of the residential homes there. Um, we've always, you know, kept that in mind with signage and coming and goings and so forth. Um, when we developed Romney Road sixteen years ago, one of the concerns that, uh, the then highway superintendent, Andy Baggers, had the time was I have a landscape lawn care business and um, he had, uh, major league concerns about trucks entering and exiting out of that egress because of the rise of the road there and the safety. And now you've got school buses that are coming out. And, uh, a lot of them are coming down eighteen and heading west on Winter Street. So, you know, again, I'm all for the business. I'm all for good business. And I think, you know, done right, it's only going to enhance what we have going on at our place. Uh, my wife made a remark about the, the road and the improvements. We've done a lot down there widening and grading and plowing, we irrigate some of it, we light some of it. And I know there'll be a project out front in eighteen that he also will, is a pot owner of Romney Road. So there'll be, you know, future dealings coming about where if they're going to have an access to the rear of Romney Road, Romney Road's going to change. It needs to be widened. It needs to, needs to be lit. It needs to be paved. And you've got, you're going to have two projects coming about you. So I just want to, you know, open it up and not just focus on this one property. The LeMay property is coming before you sooner than later. Um, and to put it all on one party, I think would be too much. So I, I think it's all or nothing. I definitely want to see, um, you know, the rights, uh, regarding the private road and somebody using, being able to use that is their egress. If the law allows, then it allows. And if not, the lot next to us is for sale. If the applicant, you know, um, has it in his budget, he's, can purchase that property and become an owner of Romney Road. And now I think that would, you know, relieve that, that issue regarding uh, right of way and ownership. So, um, you know, we missed, I will try to catch up looking at the the plan. We haven't looked at it yet. Well, is it available online?
It is.
Okay. Uh, so we'll, we'll, uh, we'll look at that and, and be next, you know, wait for the next meeting and have additional questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else besides Mr. Diaz? I just want to keep the public on if this public comment.
Um, at this time, I do not see any other public comments or we have a, a, a previous member of the public, once again, raising their hand, Ms. Castillo.
Right, Ms. Castillo.
Hi, I'm sorry. I apologize. So, um, again, Eliana Castillo, one twenty-five Winter Street. Um, I would like, also like to, uh, get more information about where the, um, the waste disposal, it's going to be located. Again, just because it's, it's like right, uh, behind our house. And what kind of traffic is this going to generate since it's going to be around the building?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Go ahead, Mr. Diaz.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just wanted to bring one point uh, to the table. We talked about retaining walls a lot. All good comments, completely understood. Um, and more so for the abutters, uh, the retaining wall along Winter Street, the high side is on Winter Street. So they, the abutters on winter would not be looking at the face of the retaining wall. You would only see the face of the retaining wall from inside the site. The site actually sits lower than the retaining wall there. I just wanted to make that point clear, um, for anybody who didn't understand the plan. That's all.
I, I did make a note, and I don't know if it's possible, because, um, uh, Eric, if, if there's some sort of elevation plan that, um, you could provide, just kind of showing what it would look like from, uh, a perspective, I wouldn't say perspective view, but in terms of what, what it would look like from ground level, I guess, from Romney Road and Winter Street, if that, if that's feasible.
Absolutely. We can do even a cross section through there to show the difference between the grade of the bill, of this, the pad site, the wall, and then the grade of Romney Road through there. We can.
Yeah, because I, I think it's difficult to kind of imagine it from a bird's eye view. Um, I think from like a elevation standpoint would help with the perspective on this.
So Mr. Diaz, I think, I also think, you know, Mr. Geller made a good point. There was a, a, a building that you showed. And then the, the hand draw, draw, draw renderings really don't match up. So if we could actually get the actual plans, whether the locations are what the buildings will look like, I think that's, that's important. You know, I'd like to see that, that building closer to the fridge trunk maybe a little bit. So if you could perhaps pull the retaining wall in, not have as big of a retaining wall, have a bigger buffer to, um, to Winter Street and just, you know, properly screen that project and maybe provide some additional screening in that snow storage area, increase the lawn and around the area to keep that, that feel there. So I think the big thing we talked about today is you know, it's a legal thing that you're going to have to demonstrate that. You know, I'm just, Mr. Really brought it to the beginning of the meeting, have to demonstrate that this applicant does have rights to that. Uh, if they don't have rights to that, can they establish rights to that? And if they can, can they have the, the, the ability to upgrade it if we still condition that? So, but I think, I think those are the major points.
Mr. Driscoll, hey, I just, uh, make one comment on that, on what you just said. I think, I, I think that as much as the applicant's attorney is going to um, give some sort of decision on Romney Road, I think, um, town attorney should make it, make a ruling on what, uh, responsibility we have to Romney Road. Should go to town attorney. That's what I'm saying.
So I think what they can provide, what they can provide in terms of demonstrating rights and then we can have a conversation with maybe Mr. O'Brien, then refer it if maybe.
Yeah, I, I would, I just kind of to, to raise point, uh, it's something that, um, if we have any, once we receive information from the applicant, um, we, uh, Bob and I can reach out to Attorney Rollins and kind of summarize, uh, a conversation that we'll have, um, with him in regards to this because I'm, I'm from a, from a site plan review perspective, um, I'm trying to figure out you know, th- these are questions of the deed and i- in terms of circulation, it is a question of rights to access, um, but it's, you know, it's a question of the board's purview. If, you know, if the board approves it with a site plan as presented like this, and then the applicant doesn't have access, then they would have to come in and modify it to access Winter Street. So um, we'll see what the applicant provides us and we'll summarize it, um, to the, uh, applicant and actually to the board as well, um, for the, uh, next meeting that this is, uh, continued to.
Yeah, the more I think about it, we should, it is right, we should
Yep, I'll have a, we'll, we'll have a conversation. We will summarize that conversation at the, uh, next meeting that this is on for.
And any other board comments, questions?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just kind of reiterate, uh, the, the Prisco's concerns are essentially my concerns, um, regarding Romney Road. Um, I still think it'd be, but a project that came in off of Winter Street, but if, if the rights exist and the applicant is willing to do the, what I feel are necessary, um, improvements to Romney Road, then, you know, I could be okay with that. But as it sits right now, if they were just going to come in on that road in its current state, I think that would, that would just cause problems going forward. So I'd either like to see it coming on Winter Street or we get some kind of guarantee that Romney Road will be improved to be able to handle the, uh, the truck traffic that will be coming in.
Assuming they have the rights. So, all right. Um, any other board comments or public comments before we, I, I think we need to continue this and get a lot more information. Um, are there any?
Yes, I do. I do.
Oh.
Yes, sir. Say your name and address.
Yep, um, Tom O'Keefe, one forty Winter Street and, um, right across the street and directly in front of it. One of the other questions that we have, and I think it affects not just us, but also um, I believe one forty-five Winter Street that they just purchased down the property, is what about lighting? Uh, we've had issues before with the other plaza that was next to our home on, on our side with lighting. Um, there was, there was a lot of issues during night and how the lighting and the, and the spotlights would come on. So I didn't see anything in the plan regarding how lighting is going to be, how, how high it's going to be and how it's going to affect other people in the neighborhood. So I think that affects me, but it also affects one forty-five dramatically.
So we, we asked for a foot candle plan that Mr. Diaz, that Mr. Diaz said they had prepared, which he did prepare. And it chose, you know, zero foot candles beyond the property line, I believe he stated, but Mr. Tanze, our town engineer, has not done a thorough review of the project yet. So I'm sure lighting will be one of the NFC addresses.
All right, wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll put in my chat my email as well. Um, if anyone is having a difficult time, um, accessing the plans, because I, I know there were some questions about, um, seeing the plans and I, I'm happy to, um, share those and provide the link to those plans as well. So, um, emails in the chat. Feel free to shoot me an email. I can assist with that.
All right. Is there no more board and public comments? Is there anything from the applicant at this point?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to go a month out, Mr. Nani, is it two weeks?
Uh, just, and just for a note for the applicant and the board, uh, our next meeting is March fifteenth. And after that, um, due to, um, Passover, our next meeting after the March fifteenth meeting will be April nineteenth.
Can you get all this legal work, modify the plans and everything by the nineteenth, uh, the fifteenth, Mr. Diaz? Do you want to go the nineteenth of April?
I'd like to take a shot at the fifteenth of March if we can. If we're not going to be ready in time, I will send the continuance request to Shane's office.
How is our schedule for the fifteenth, Mr. Oberman?
Um, we have, uh, the continuation for Jasmine Way, um, but I don't see, you know, having two site plans on the agenda, I don't see as a major issue. And if, if like Mr. Diaz said, if they can't turn it around within a certain amount of time, then they'll be on for the April nineteenth meeting.
I mean, I think one of the big things is easily we have to demonstrate they have rights. If they can't, then we, they have to redesign the project, right? We'll get it right. So I think, I think we're going to go pretty quickly if we're going to be able to meet on the fifteenth of that, correct?
Correct. It, it would probably be by next week. So it, I'll place it on the agenda. And if they request a continuance to the nineteenth, um, I will place that on the agenda as well. And the board will vote to accept, um, that continuance if they wish.
So Mr. Chair, just so you know, I, I will not be present on the fifteenth. What was that? Anybody else?
Uh, I'll be present, but, uh, speaking personally, I would prefer to move this to the nineteenth. Uh, I believe Mr. Geller has, uh, valuable experience in this. The retaining wall is a, uh, what are the stickier points of this? So I prefer to do it at the meeting he's present for.
Uh, and I, I, I don't think they're going to be able, I was still waiting for the letter from Mr. Tanze that they're going to have to respond to. And potentially, we got, redesign the site. And potentially get us some legal documents that we have to review, correct?
And I would say, Mr. Driscoll, that even if, you know, next week is the deadline for the next agenda, even if they provide us with a legal opinion, then Mr. Rollins is going to need to weigh in on that. Um, I don't want to assume that he's just sitting there waiting for us to give him some work.
I agree with the motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I first like to make a separate motion. I think that as much as a, uh, discussion with Attorney Rollins is valuable. I think this, this development hinges on Romney Road, and I think we need a formal letter from town attorney as to the status of Romney Road and what can be done off that site there. So I would, I would make a motion that we actually get a formal, uh, uh, letter from town attorney on the, uh, use and care of Romney Road.
I don't think the town attorney can opine on private property. I mean, this is, you know, he can respond to whatever the applicant gives, but the, the town has no ownership interest in Romney Road. And, you know, to ask the town solicitor or counsel to look into a private matter, I don't think is appropriate.
But, uh, just, uh, this is an actual question now, aren't, but we, if we approve this, we are approving a, well, we're a public body approving something that is going to abut a private road. I mean, there, there is an issue here, it seems.
Right. I think, I think what we need to do is let the applicant provide. I mean, it's, it's the burden, the burdens on the applicant to provide the, the information and the proof that they have the rights. And then if they, and then we can take that information and objection Rollins verify that it's either valid or invalid.
Correct. And then the, the, the perception of site plan review and what the board's purview is for approval for site plans is more so for circulation, not necessarily a determination of public and private ways. It's just more adequacy of the way itself.
Right. I think we're saying the same thing, but we want the applicant to do the work. And provide that, that it's, it's the burdens on them to provide the research that they have the rights. And then just kind of you know, in terms of denying that, that information for us. Does that make sense?
Yep.
I guess so, but I'm not totally convinced.
Can we convince you at the next meeting, Ray?
We'll try that.
I, uh, the burden of proof is on me.
All right. So do we have a motion to?
All right, so do we have a motion to, it sounds like going to April nineteenth?
I'll make the motion to uh continue this to the April nineteenth meeting.
I'll second that.
To a motion by Mr. Jemmy and second by Mr. McDonald in discussion? Mr. Jemmy?
Yes.
Throw us.
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Yes.
Just for the public's benefit, you're not gonna get notified again.
This meeting, that one notification is the notification, so this is continued to a Zoom meeting? Uh, is it Zoom correction?
Uh, well, I uh. I will, I would say to all interested parties to please check the agenda. Um, whether this meeting be in person or via Zoom, um. We shall let you know via the agenda, and like I said, my email is in the chat, and I'm happy to send that uh. Agenda out if requested from um anyone.
So we we continue that to April nineteenth at six thirty, public rapid, so, all right, so. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on on the agenda, item three. We're gonna turn this over to uh Mr. Roy, he's making a presentation from the County Economic Development Director, Bob Roy. We got a form-based code. The really go ahead, sir.
Yep, just give me a minute to uh. Figure out my screen here. All right. No better time to talk about form-based code than following an application on. Design that not everyone is comfortable with, um. So I I, when I did my presentation last month, I, you know, and I gave you an overview on what direction I thought that. Uh, the council wanted uh my office to take with respect to. Uh, economic development and primarily, you know, initially focusing on Central Square and then the Campus Plaza area. Um, form-based code is something that I've used in the past and I think is very applicable. Uh, to what Bridgewater is trying to do, so I just would like to spend a few minutes. For those of you that aren't familiar with form-based code, to just kind of talk a little bit more about what it is and how it works. And that what we, you know, think the next steps are moving forward. So in the uh comprehensive master plan that the uh town adopted last spring. Uh, one of the recommendations was to develop architectural and site design standards. That were tailored to each business area, use architectural peer review services as needed. During the permitting process for large commercial industrial mixed-use developments. And with that in mind, I think as we're looking at Central Square and the Campus Plaza area. Uh, that form-based code kind of satisfies what those architectural and site design uh standards would be. Um, so just, you know, conventional zoning has a focus on separation of uses. And it's prohibition of ostensibly undesirable activities, often conflicted with the very places it was intended to protect. A form-based code is a template or a kit of parts that repeats from one community to the other. You know, how streets, civic spaces, buildings, frontage, signage, and so forth, how that's all articulated. But form-based code i- is guided by how each of those community components. Look and feel in a particular community, so the form-based code isn't something that. My office is unilaterally gonna design, it's gonna require uh public input. And in this, you know, I had this slide, the next one in my previous presentation. Uh, before we get into some of the mechanics and how we get to the form-based code, just. Generally from ten thousand feet, what are the benefits uh of form-based code, it's an alternative zoning district. That allows for the regulation of de- regulation of development that helps the community realize its vision for a specific area. Uh, you know, as I said, existing zoning focuses on separating land uses, uh form-based, and it does little to. Encourage an integrated approach to development, uh the form-based code helps regulate land development redevelopment. By setting careful and clear controls on building form, rather than focusing strictly on types of land use. Uh, the form-based code typically allows for more density than existing zoning districts. It clearly defines requirements for building heights, building and parking placement, architectural features. As well as standards for sidewalks, street trees, parking, public spaces, uh it it. Provides a mix of affordability with respect to housing units. It can provide a less intensive, expensive option than the current planning and zoning review process for an applicant. Uh, it can provide a financial incentive by offering faster and more streamlined approval process to the developer. Uh, the benefits are that includes a more predictable outcome due to the form-driven zoning requirements. And the town and community each benefit from managed growth and public improvements that are aligned with the collective vision for the future. So again, just, you know, summary of, you know. Benefits, it gives us a chance to revitalize, you know, a lot of one-story architecturally insignificant buildings. Intelligent increased density, potential for improvements, infrastructure, increased housing opportunities, mixed income rental ownership. Preserves the historic character of downtown Bridgewater, takes development pressure off other areas of town. Uh, that you really don't want to see much more development, and then it obviously results in increased tax revenues. So as I said, having some public participation i- is critical to the development of the form-based code. Uh, it's important that we have uh consensus in terms of building and visualization, which would typically. Take place during a community engagement process. Uh, the result of that is, is that the public has a clear understanding of where we're going with this. So that the code as it's developed must fit into what the community wants and what the existing environment is. And the vision at the end should be apparent to all users and require them to execute to the extent that. What they're proposing is consistent to what the public said they wanted to see in the form-based code. So a form-based code is sparked by a passionate community vision, uh that pinpoints the features and character cherished by residents and identifies how they aspire and grow. It's important for the code to drive this intent all the way through implementation. At existing regulations and policies like underlying zoning, emergency services. Policies, building codes, and landscaping standards all complement the code. The code code should be clear, user-friendly, and formatted for convenient use by staff developers and others. And the code should be easy to u- update as conditions, technology, and market demands change. Think I just had this one, sorry. This is just, you know, kind of. An example of what one page of a form-based code, a regulating plan, this is one component. Um, would look like. And and another that just talks about building size, you know, what the neighborhood is, you know, what the height should be, what the setback should be. Uh, not that this is is for Bridgewater, but just to give you an idea of what's included, I mean, this really becomes. The development bible for a particular area. So what's next, so tonight we did an overview and discussion. Uh, I did do a similar presentation to what I had given you last month. To the Town Council in in February, I think there, at least now, is some consensus that we need to do something. And this is, at least for now, what we're gonna do. Uh, we are gonna have a workshop with the Town Council in April with respect to Central Square and other areas of development. We're gonna begin this public engagement process in April as well, uh we're gonna start to do uh. Bi-monthly presentations or TV show on Bridgewater TV. We will be scheduling a public charrette. I would like to form a working committee to draft the form-based code. Uh, with representation of, you know, a few members from the planning board. A few members from the Town Council as well as members of the public. Uh, the goal is to uh amend the zoning ordinance by the fourth quarter of this year. Uh, to create a downtown overlay district that would include form-based code. On the zoning map now, we have the central business di- district articulated. But what I'm suggesting is that we have an overlay district that includes all of Central Square. All the way down to Spring Street and Campus Plaza to incorporate what we anticipate to be. The MBTA MBTA communities as well, uh because these are all gonna work hand in hand. Um, again, these were the recommendations for Central Square and the CBD that were in the comprehensive master plan. Um, so I think everything that we're doing is consistent with what is in the plan. Uh, we have uh grant applications in with uh with HUD now. Uh, through uh some help from Congressman Keating's office. Uh, for some technical assistance to kind of facilitate bringing all the various stakeholders together. Um, and then we need to, you know, again, engage the community and look at what the benefits of, you know, creating this mixed-use environment would be. Um, again, with the idea that we preserve kind of the character that we have in Central Square. As we look at the Foundry site, as we look at the friendly site, as we look at Campus Plaza. You know, what are those buildings or what are those developments gonna look like? And how can they complement what Central Square is and how what that transition away from downtown is? That, you know, you potentially, as I've said before, Campus Plaza presents the greatest opportunity. Uh, for more density and height because it backs up to the Styles and Heart site. Um, you know, conversations with respect to relocating the MBTA station. A lot of these conversations are happening right now, um. There are many stakeholders, MBTA, environmental protection as relates to wastewater capacity. Bridgewater State University, uh we've reached out to the governor and lieutenant governor's office, so there's a lot of moving pieces. Um, and I say that as I enter eight, week eight of my tenure here at Bridgewater, which. Um, has gone by rather fast, so with that, I'm. Open to questions, comments, discussions on kind of what the next steps are, and thank you.
I'm not excited about this, and we probably can't have something in place until the end of twenty twenty-three, but.
I I'd like to have it be sooner, but I just think procedurally, we can't.
Right. And I, and I've talked to Shane about this a little bit though, but if we if we do have a large project coming. Between now and then, and it, oh, and I know it's left up to interpretation to some degree, but. Our current zoning says that if you're gonna have multiple buildings and break up the commercial and different parcels. You know, it would, it should, it it doesn't say it should, it should, it 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 should, it shall, I believe. Mimic a village center, so. It, as a Band-Aid between now and and when we get this done, I mean, you and Shane can. I- i- if there is a multi-building project, you could point that, point them to that. And and try to push, not push, but try to encourage them to design it. As to how we might want it to look in nine months, so what the zoning might look like, is that true?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, I mean, absolutely, I mean, you know, tomorrow has any, you know. Shane and I are meeting with a consultant for. Uh, the Foundry project, I mean, that he's doing an economic impact analysis. Um, but, yeah, I mean, as much as we can pump the brakes on that, as I've said before. As we're trying to develop this simultaneously, um, you know, I I think it's important. That, you know, the council was supportive of, yeah, this looks great at ten thousand feet, but I need to know, I need to feel comfortable. That they understand exactly what it is, you know, we're doing, and, you know, what the implications of that are, you know, those people that. You know. The Campus Plaza owners, I've had conversations. Less favorable conversation so far with the Edgewood people at Foundry. Uh, I've I've had a meeting with Mr. Pascal with respect to his property, so I mean, I think it's important that we keep those lines of communication open, but. I it's also important to me that, you know, the planning board and the council are. In 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 sync to understanding where we're going, but, you know, the form-based code only works with some community involvement, so. Uh, that, you know, at the end of the day, that the community is supportive of what this is and feels like. They have some ownership in it, so, you know, we're walking. Many simultaneous paths, but, yeah, I I, you know, to your point, Patrick, I think that. Any project, large project that's trying to come in now, I mean, we are gonna do our best to. Pass over a glass of our Kool-Aid and suggest that they sip on it and.
Well, I mean, the the other thing too is the special permit and the board has some monitor just to what. What we want, right, so, I mean, I think if you guys, if you give us guidance as to how this should look as a village center. Whether it be Campus Plaza or all Mr. Pascal's property or whatever it may be, or Edgewood. You know, we want them to go in that village. Village center, that that's already in our existing zoning, I've said that, I've been saying that all along, and. I think, I think if you just Google Village Center, it it. A bunch of pretty similar pitches could come up to to what you've shown us.
Yeah, I I and I don't disagree with you, I don't know that, that, you know, some of the developers are interpreting it that way. Um, and and again, I mean, we're, I think, you know, are trying to be consistent that, you know, we understand that. At the time that you initially had the concept for what you wanted to do, this is what existed, but. There is, it's a new day, um and the council and the planning board are trying to go in a different direction. And if you go in that direction with us, ultimately, you're going to benefit. Because you have the potential to get more density than you would have gotten previous.
I guess, uh, I'll I'll make a quick comment here, uh. I'm probably gonna be the stick in the mud on this one, um, when I hear more density, I don't view that as a good thing. I think, I I think you're an excellent planner, uh, I'm sorry, I'm not sure if that's your actual title or not, but, uh. I think, I think your strategy works wonderful for uh larger communities. It's, I don't think it's what I wanna see for Bridgewater necessarily, I'm gonna keep an open mind, maybe I'm just not understanding the concept, but, uh. From what I've heard, uh, watching the um YouTube video um from the meeting I missed. I am, I'm concerned by this this change in direction.
Oh, like, 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 I. I think that. Maybe I'm misunderstanding it too, but I think that. You know, I think that when we see certain projects downtown and we see these massive apartment buildings. And and then a couple of small buildings on the front. I think that's what we're trying to get away from them, if I, if I'm understanding about it correctly, and we're trying to go to smaller. Buildings that overall may have more density, but they're smaller, they're more attractive, they're more walkable, they're more, they're less impactful, there's. There's a different mix of housing and um in terms of rental owner occupied, it's affordable, et cetera, so. Uh, did you see the pictures that that Mr. Roy showed of like Massey Commons and the building and and some of those that meeting?
Uh, I believe that's the meeting I missed, but I did watch the video, um. I mean, I I think that's sounds great, but I don't see how you can. Be arguing for higher density in smaller buildings at the same time, unless you're just packing in people like a sardine can, which I don't think is a. Great thing either, um.
Well, I mean, I'll give you an example, if you look at Campus Plaza as an example, there's almost fourteen acres of land there. And right now, the tenant mix there is what we would call Class C tenants. Um, if you look in the downtown area, those are probably Class D tenants. Um, so as you're looking at new development and your, you know, desire to have commercial and retail space. As I pointed out in my last presentation. The construction cost and the land acquisition cost to develop that type of space. It requires that property owner, you know, get the, and the average rents, I mean. Pulling it from two data sources, CoStar and another source for the markets we're in. Require that, you know, that landlord get twenty-seven dollars a foot. Triple net, so that means thirty-five dollars a foot for that space. So if you go to Central Square now, when you have nail salons, body piercing, smoke shop. Uh, tho- those tenants aren't paying that kind of rent, so if you want to get the type of businesses that are. Going to be desirable to residents of Bridgewater that have moved here. You you need to have people on the street, so when you look at a Campus Plaza, Campus Plaza has looked like that for forty years. It has vacancies, that Federal Realty was ready to flip that, they still might. But I mean, the idea is that we, the town has agreed to enter into. Uh, transit-oriented development with MBTA and the state, that requires a certain amount of density per acre. In order for the town to get funding to build that, um, so, I mean, this is not necessarily. A- a- and I can understand your hesitation about it and reservations about it, and I respect that. Um, but the direction I understand from the Town Council is that. They understand that these are some of the things that we need to do to increase the tax base. By creating additional density, you create the opportunity that you can get developers in exchange. That you can get developers in exchange for that additional density to make contributions to upgrades to our infrastructure. And we are right up against the limits of the amount of sanitary waste that we can treat at the wastewater treatment plant. So there are many, many moving pieces to how this all works. These aren't one-offs, but. Um, happy to spend as much time with you, Mr. McDonald, to walk through this. Listen to what your concerns are and and at the end of the day. I may not ever change your mind, um, but being, these are development strategies. That aren't creating an urban area, they're creating village areas. Um. We, we, I I think, you know, I've said it in previous meetings, I think that Bridgewater has a real opportunity to create something very special. I mean, concentrating development at Campus Plaza. Perkins Foundry, maybe Pascal, there's nothing happening there now. There's nothing positive happening there now. And, you know, if we can do something better, that brings people to the town. Uh, you know, I was at a meeting with Senator Markey and Mr. Dutton and Mr. Clark at at Bridgewater State on Friday. They are expanding their cybersecurity presence. There are going to be businesses and jobs that will be a spinoff of that. And I think the town is in a position to take advantage of those things that. And we're not gonna be bringing in foundries anymore. We're not gonna be at bringing in steel mills anymore. We're not gonna be bringing in shoe factories anymore. We have the opportunity to bring white collar jobs in here and, you know, have a better relationship. You know, with the university, how do we complement each other? But. The only way to do that is to kind of reinvent, because what you have now, quite honestly, it's not working.
Well, I mean. I guess I have a few comments on that. Uh, I think what we have now does actually work. I'm I'm quite happy with this town and my my life in it, the. What, what it sounds to me like you're suggesting, and I'm not saying this is what you're actually attempting to do is. Retain the veneer of this, this community. Without the spirit of it. You know, uh.
I would say quite the opposite. I mean, I think the whole point of public engagement is, you know. There are people that have lived in this community for all their life. There are people that have lived in this community for ten years. There are people that have lived in this community for ten months, but they're all members of this community. And I think, you know, having them have an opportunity to express their collective desires and vision and input. Is important, but when I look at the buildings on Central Square now, in the complete lack of investment in those buildings. I have seriously, I have serious concerns as to what the long-term viability of that is. I've talked a lot about that, you know, I think that the town has a real opportunity with the old town hall. To do an arts and cultural center there. I'm gonna be putting in a two million dollar request to Senator Markey's office in the next week. To kind of jumpstart that rehabilitation. The university has a. Uh, a, you know, an interest in that, but I I'm acutely aware of what the history of Bridgewater is. And nothing that I'm talking about is a veneer. What I'm talking about is if you went and looked at, you know, with the exception of restoration hardware. I mean, restoration, coffee, the juice mill, you have a real estate office. If you look on the opposite side of Central Square, I mean, if you arguably could tell me you think that's the highest and best use of those buildings. Single room occupancy, student housing, uh Brazilian Jihitsu, you know, that's not, it it's not, and it's not doing anything. For downtown. Um, you know, my goal is to make this community a very walkable community. We don't capitalize on the number of people that we have at the university. Uh, we have some pedestrian and traffic issues that we have to address with, but we need to do something. I mean, the. Experts from outside, I think most people would say, this is not working.
If I could just make a a quick general comment here, I um. What I, what I like about this is not the end result, because we're nowhere near anything like that, but I like the idea. That one, we're thinking differently. And two, that we're getting everybody involved, including the public, and I think that's important, that maybe we should just step back. And say, maybe we can do this better. And let's see how we can do it. And by bringing in the planning board, Town Council, other people and town government. The public can sit down and try to work things out. Let's try it. If it doesn't, if we don't like the end result, then so be it, but at least uh we're trying something different, because I think I do agree with Bob that. When it's not working now, when we have, when we go through what a, a year plus. Fight over Broad Street, uh, which uh turned out to be an absolute disaster. Both when, in my opinion, the proposal and the discussion, I think, could have been changed. But I I'm, I'm all for trying this. We we have, we have to try something new.
I'll just echo what you just said, Ray. Whatever I put out in terms of what I did in past experience. All I'm trying to do is stimulate conversation. I'm not saying that that's this way or no way. I'm just trying, I think most people are visual learners and they need to have some perspective in terms of. The scale of buildings that you're talking about, what the layout of those buildings are. Um, what the orientation of those buildings are. I mean, it it could look completely different at the end of the day, but. The key is, is what Ray said is. Let's define what community is. I mean, there might be a learning lesson that the community is broader than many think right now.
Mi- Michael. I think I've said this before, I'm against all the stuccity down downtown as well. The way the current ordinance is written, because I think the way the current ordinance is written. So we're just gonna get a bunch of crappy rental units. And these people aren't gonna have disposable income to increase the the commercial base. But and I think I said it before too, if you have real tight design standards. And you have owner occupied in some, some areas, time houses, different types of housing as opposed to just these. Big apartment, climate type buildings down, you know. I think it'd be a very different feel and and even though it may be slightly higher density. I think it'll be a lot more impactful in creating a walkable, a walkable downtown, you know, I. I actually had somebody look at us, I I tried to encourage to develop a recently look at downtown. And they looked at what we approved. So on the friendly side, and they said, wow, I can't figure out how to approve this, this is more, this is more urban info, that's how they refer to it. And I, I look at that and I look at what Edgewood is proposing as like urban info. And I think if we have some real tight design standards, smaller buildings, more buildings, more landscaping, more walkable areas. I I'd be more comfortable with with gray density and. But but I knew, I think the way that the ordinance is written right now, we have a bunch of crappy apartments and it's, and it must be pushed back and get what we want. Like, and I think check the standards are gonna make a huge difference downtown.
And just to comment on everything, um. We can only, in in terms of a review perspective and an application standpoint, in. Um, we can only hold applicants to standards that we currently have in our zoning. And there are very minimal design standards as. Uh, it is only so many design standards that we can hold applicants to, um, through this process, so. Um, you know, I think what Bob is saying, i- in terms of, it's it's the beginning of a process, process and a conversation. And we're happy to provide examples of other locate, other places that have currently used form-based code, whether it be in Massachusetts or elsewhere. Um, and kind of just kind of get the conversation moving. Um. Yeah.
I I'd say, I'd say two things here. Uh, first of all, uh. Mr. Really, I'd be happy to take you up on your offer to to talk about this more in depth. I I I'll plead ignorance here. I might just not understand the concept, that that's entirely possible. Um. I have no reservations admitting that. My big concern though is we're a community, not an economy, and I've I've used that line before. So I I do worry that we're kind of falling into the trap of thinking like this town can sustain endless growth. I think that's a, that's a capitalist fallacy that comes up again and again. Uh, so I'm worried that's kind of what we're falling into. I don't think this town can expand endlessly.
And I, and I agree with you, and I think, you know, that's, you know, kind of. The motivation to, you know, you, you don't, you want to kind of limit. The amount of development you have that was former farmland as an example. Um, because.
Exactly.
With it, with or without. Any of what we're talking about tonight. The town is up against some real hard. Limits in terms of the amount of wastewater that we can discharge properly. At the wastewater plant, and we have limitations on our access to water. So through these conversations, we potentially open the door to say, is there an opportunity as an example for the university? To redirect their wastewater to the Department of Corrections, who has a wastewater treatment plant that is underutilized. And that opens up additional capacity for the town. What, notwithstanding anything I've said tonight or do. A lot of proposed projects, and a lot of these are forty Bs, have pushed the town right up against the limit in terms of the amount. Of wastewater that we can legally discharge from the wastewater treatment plant. That is not a good thing. So what we're trying to do through this is say, okay. How are there ways we can, you know, create financial opportunities to offset that? Can we create opportunities for some of these subdivisions that are outside of the town to have their own wastewater treatment, smaller plants? So I mean, I look at things holistically. I don't look at things in silos. I don't look at things in a straight line. I look at connections, but and Mr. McDonald, I'm more than happy to spend as much time as you would like and. You know, I'm not gonna suggest that you're ignorant to this at all, because I don't think that's a fair statement. But it is a complicated process, and that's why getting the public involved i- i- is important. But, you know, again, the, prior to my taking this position. You know, the town made a commitment that they were gonna participate in MBTA communities. That requires a certain amount of density in that Spring Street Campus Plaza, Waterford area. Well, density creates volume for the wastewater treatment plant, so. I I'm looking at, okay, you, you signed up for this, how are you addressing this? I it was a question I asked in every meeting I had prior to taking this job was, what's your capacity for infrastructure? And I got here and I'm like, oh my God, you have issues with capacity for infrastructure.
I can, and Michael and Bob, but you know, MBTA communities requires what fifteen units per acre? And we, we already, we already allow downtown eighteen to twenty six, right? So.
Just, just to, just to. But in, sorry, Pat, um, that we do that allow that for downtown, but this. Um, through MBT communities, it's allowing residential units by right. This is not mixed use, it is residential units by right, fifteen units per acre.
Right. Alright, so, I, so, so, so we don't have to keep saying this, so. Probably three or four weeks before Bob came, I get to go on a call with him. And I think I probably sounded a lot like you. I said, I don't want, you know. More residential and more density, you know, I I hear all about it, the soccer field and we're building too much in town, et cetera. And I wanna see more completion growth and then.
Bob mentioned, uh, Mankin to Medicon. I mean, I kept saying this, so what the heck's he talking about? And it was an ocean state job lot, uh, proposal. Now, now I'm trying to like it, and I think if you see. Your designer and how he transforms the ocean state job lot into an area where instead of being a, a bunch of pavement. In this big ugly building, it could potentially be a theater and, you know, little shops and. And, um, you know, townhouse, townhouses in a certain area and rentals in the middle area. It it was very, I thought very well done. And I think Fasano neither was the, was the engineer.
I'll find that sound really good, just so you can. Just so you can take a look at it.
This has a talking point, you know, the wastewater treatment plan is permitted for. One point four million gallons of discharge a day. Right now, with committed projects and and primarily subdivisions outside of downtown. We're over one point two million gallons a day. So there there's not a lot of upside. So if we're, as an example, through these conversations. Able to reallocate the. Allocation that the university takes as an example, well, that frees up a lot more opportunities for us. Um, but. You know, the delta between one point two and one point four is not a lot. And I mean, that is, and there's no expectation that environmental protection. From Massachusetts is gonna let you increase that discharge permit. So I mean, those are real concerns that, you know, people don't kind of think about when they flush or, you know, water comes out of their tap. Oh, they, it it's not an unlimited resource. And, you know, just the geological. Conditions that exist in Bridgewater further prohibit, you know, what your potential for growth is. Um, and and this is my, this has been my argument that why the state needs to be in this conversation. And the state has passed legislation that said if somebody comes in with a forty B, you know, you have to do everything you can to make that happen. And that's used up a lot of capacity.
Well, I I'll say this has been a very illuminating conversation. Um. So I I appreciate everyone for that, uh. I'd love to meet with you, Mr. Rully, maybe you can, you can give me the rundown, like more uh an in-depth look into the, to what you're proposing. Uh, I'd love to. To get more knowledgeable of the subject, um, so I'll probably reach out at some point. Perfect.
Bob, is is the district that you're tying the central business district at all? Are you looking to expand that?
Yeah, I mean, I think the way it looks on the map now, it's not as connected as it should be. I think. You know, we should include, you know, Central Square from Town Hall, you know, Plymouth Street. Broad Street incorporates Spring Street, and right now, I think in the MBTA communities, we have Waterford Village, but. Really not thinking, there's not a real. Easy physical connection back to. I mean, maybe if it's at the university where the train station is, but I think it's important that, you know, we continue to talk about relocating. The, the train station as well, or the platforms, it's not.
But essentially, the main focus was, because the central business district. Does get out of Spring Street and it does get out on one side of Plymouth Street, so. So your focus is essentially on the CBD area.
Yes, that's correct.
Can I just ask a quick uh question, Bob? You mentioned that you've talked to developers also in this process and I'm curious as to. How they responded to, if they did at all, to your thoughts of the future of the town.
I can tell you that. Federal Realty was quite excited about it. I mean, there are a national real estate investment trust. Um, quite honestly, they were. Transparent saying, you know, we've cleaned that side up a little bit because it's not consistent with what our portfolio is, it's underperforming. And we were looking to potentially sell that. Um, but now that you're talking about, you know, some things that are more consistent, what what we've done in other communities. We might stick around for a little while. Um, you know, when we had conversations with the people that are developing the Foundry. And they were the position that, you know, th- this is all, you know, we don't want to talk about it, this is what we're gonna do. Um, you know, I still think we have an opportunity to turn them a little bit, and that might be through the, the. The planning board process. I think, you know, my conversation with Mr. Pascal that. Um, I think there's an opportunity there to do something better than what was presented previously. Um. I mean, I look at those as to be some of the largest parcels that can have the ability to start to transform some things. But also, you know, just having conversations with property owners in Central Square, I mean, the building. Next to the old town hall, uh, is owned by some family members of the Cumberland Farms family. And they have no debt on that property. Kind, there's suggestions that there's a purchase and sale agreement to use that as student housing. I mean, that, that's not the highest and best use of that building. And, you know, the building next to it is single room occupancy. Um, you know, the facades of those buildings are in really horrible shape. Um, you know, we have another building on the opposite side that's been. A first floor vacant commercial space since it was built. Um. And 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 some of that is gonna be impacted by, you know, what decisions the council makes with respect to how traffic is gonna flow through Central Square. Old County Planning Commission is gonna be doing a presentation in the next couple of weeks to. Council's Downtown Committee, they're, they're studying that area. They're doing computer simulation in terms of what different scenarios, but, you know, again, I think, you know, the point I'm trying to make is. None of this is done in a vacuum. All of these things are interrelated and.
Well, you know, I just, just one comment here. I mean, uh, from a selfish point of view, if developers know. That the town is moving with an overall plan and moving in that direction. that the town is moving with an overall plan and moving in that direction, that may make our life a lot easier come.
Yeah, absolutely.
Or plans being submitted. So we won't have to go through that damn Broad Broad Street thing. Thing again. So anyway.
And that's the, you know, again, that's the advantage of a form-based code. If you have a form-based code and developer comes in, checks all the boxes that the community says they want, that's an expedited approval process. I mean, you know, you get to go to the front of the class. Not every developer has to do that. They can be at their own peril if they want to do something different. But the whole idea of form-based code is this is what the community wants. This is you as a developer can have an expedited approval process. It saves you money. Then people aren't showing up with torches and pitchforks at meetings.
Let's try it.
You know, I actually have a question on that. You know, there's been talk like what the community wants. How how do we get the community consensus on that? Is there like a vote proposed, like a town ballot, or is this just going to be whoever shows up at council meetings and talks?
No, I I think, I mean, there's, you know, there's not a singular approach. I mean, as I said, you know, we are going to start. We've talked to Bridgewater TV. We're going to start to do some programming with them twice a month, beginning in April. We're going to start to get we've my office and Nicole, my office and I have started to go out to meet with small business owners and property owners. We'll continue to do that to get feedback. We will do outreach to have, you know, a community charrette or a community vision exercise. You know, it's not going to be, you know, you get one chance to come to a town council meeting either up or down. I don't think that's, and as I said earlier, you know, doing a workshop with the town council to make understand that they understand what this process looks like is is important too, because that ultimately, at the end of the day, you know, they're going to have to support this. But you know, I I think people feel like there's been a lot of studies done and you get to a point where it's paralysis by analysis. We need to do, you know, the message to me was we need to do something. I mean, that was, you know, when I, as I went through my interview process and and consider taking this position was we need to do something. Okay, I I can take you wherever where you want to go, but I just need to know there's consensus on where you want to go.
I apologize. My my connection is kind of failing here.
Oh, you just missed the best part.
It'll be it will be in the minutes.
I I got a kind of roboty. But so basically we get this consensus is talking to small business owners and talking to everybody. It's not going to be a bound or anything.
I mean, talking to small business owners, talking to property owners, talking people from a larger community. You know, as I said, if you look at the demographics of of Bridgewater and you compare that to all the surrounding communities, it is much more appealing than any other community in terms of what area meaning income is, what disposable income is, you know, levels of education. But for that population, the things that, you know, they like to see, they don't exist in in Bridgewater right now. Those people go out of town for certain, you know, retail or restaurant experiences. I have no knock against the ninety-nine restaurant, but that's, you want to have a vibrant downtown. I want to have three or four, five or six choices of restaurants in the downtown area.
Me too. We could use a steakhouse real bad. That's for sure.
You know, I I said to Michael Dutton two weeks ago, I was walking around town. I said, it was a little disturbing to me that the most prominent intersection in town has a sign on top that tells you McDonald's is a quarter mile down on the right.
Right.
You'll be a hero if you get that sign down. I'm not sure how many sticks of dynamite it would take to implode that thing down. But every time I go by that, I say that sign's got to come down.
I'm going to just lean on my my friend, Mr. Solari from the building office to say there's some kind of code violation.
Well, we should, maybe we could write one.
We're in a hurricane zone. The sign's not hurricane.
I just I just talk to those by the building and take it down. Well, it changes occupants here. So, you know, wouldn't be a hard task.
But you know, that's that's a building that if you look at the architecture of that building and the features of that building, it's a really cool building. It has really, you know, a lot of intricate kind of stonework or concrete work that was done. But when you look at the mix of tenants in there, I mean, that's and there's people backed up at that traffic light there. It's like, you know, the okay, I can't wait to get through this intersection. So I don't have to look at a piercing salon, a nail salon, a smoke shop, and I think I get my chakra red someplace too. You know, not that those businesses are bad, but that's not what you want for a vibrant downtown. You have a college community that has eleven thousand students that there's very rarely more than twenty in the downtown area at one time. I mean, I spent time in in New York State. I was close to Ithaca where Cornell and Ithaca College was thriving university type. We have the same opportunity here, and I think the university would like to see that happen too. So I mean, it's important that we strengthen the collaboration that we have between the university and the town. And I think there's a willingness on both sides to do that.
Well, on that, we're agreed. I guess I guess one concern I have going off the the previous conversations, I know you said you're you're talking to everybody, but that's, I mean, that's that's really not a realistic thing to say in a town of what are we thirty thousand now? So if you're mostly talking to like small business owners, people downtown, they're going to say, yeah, do whatever you need to to bring me in more business. I mean, I'm a small somewhat of a small business owner. I would I would say the same thing. That doesn't exactly mean a community consensus, though. That just means a consensus of property holders, basically.
Well, I mean, it's property owners, it's tenants, but it's also the reason to bring in the larger community in terms of a conversation of, you know, what is your sense of community? What's your definition of community? Is it a place you just live or are you invested in it? You know, again, I don't know what the final product looks like. I just know what the process needs to be to try to get to that.
I would just, a little guy gets a voice, not just people that own businesses and, you know, are in the downtown area.
So Michael.
The town is much larger than downtown.
I I I think everybody gets a voice is what you're saying. I mean, it's everything's open to this entire community. Yeah. I mean, if you sit, you sit and listen to things and 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 not that I pay a lot of attention to it, but when you people sit there and say, yeah, yeah, that's what we need is another nail shop or another tattoo parlor or another this, another that, you know. But then you hear people saying, oh, I want wet wings to come in. I want this to come in and that's come in. And you know, you have to make, you have to make it enticing to these companies to want to come to Bridgewater, you know? And I think this is a pretty good direction to go.
And here you Pat.
Sort of.
I mean, I don't know. Yeah.
You break it up.
Maybe it's maybe it's time to end the meeting.
Yeah, I think. Bob, I'll leave it on that and I'll leave it up to the rest of the board. But I know you said you probably want a couple of planning board members on it. And and I don't mind Bob Tannen coming in and do some do some work with you guys.
I will leave that decision to Mr. Driscoll as to, you know, who he feels, you know, should be part of this, but thank you, Mr. Geller.
Yeah, I'm sure this room is. Guys, give me a now.
Yeah, we can hear.
Sort of.
So I, Michael, if you look at the Ocean State, and that to go back to the the Ocean State site, the Ocean State site that Mr. Really did and Warren out.
Yeah, I believe that was part of the the YouTube video I watched from the meeting I missed.
Which is just, so I look at it this way, right? Right now, downtown zone, we allow eighteen to twenty-six acres per acre. All right. We really have crappy design guidelines. And you know, and if you go to this form-based code, if you look at what he did on that site, I believe that Ocean State, if I recall, is about eight acres. And the max residential buildout was one seventy-four units. That's about twenty-one units per acre. So I think the density we already have built in down there. I think this is just a much better way to do it with more design standards and a predictive outcome. I think that's the way I look at it. So. You guys hear that?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, you gave it.
Mr. Really, anything else or any other comments from the board?
I probably have talked too much.
I thank you. I've been more quiet tonight, but thank you, Bob, really for joining us in Bridgewater. It's brought a fresh air to to hear all that you you want to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Really, you have anything else or something?
No, it was Chris. Like, as I said, I've talked too much. But you know, again, I I'm passionate about what I do and, you know, I just want to reiterate that my goal is to do what is best for the community. At the end of the day, it might look completely different than what I'm presenting now. But if what I'm presenting now engages the community in a consensus in terms of what they want their vision to be, then I've been successful. But I'm also trying to balance that against, you know, the direction that I'm getting from, you know, my superiors and what I've heard from the town council. And I think some of that is what they're hearing from their constituencies. But I I just want to leave that it's not my way or no way. I mean, I'm just, my job is to get the community engaged in what this is going to look like. And then also share, you know, what the challenges are to get that. I mean, as I did in the last meeting, you know, here's what development costs are. You know, the economics are really important to all of these things. And I think, you know, all the projects that come before the planning board, you know, that are of this scale, you know, getting an economic impact analysis and what that's going to be, understanding what the financials for a project are, digging into what the project performance is. Those are all things that, you know, we can't make intelligent decisions without understanding all that. Developer coming in saying, I can't do this because I'm short four units without sharing financial information. It's just a developer coming in telling you he's lying to you.
So so Bob, I think I'll try to say what Ray said again. You know, as you meet with developers, from my perspective, with projects that are coming in from this point on, I I think we want them to design it like a village and we want to meet the standards that you want to meet. I mean, it is a special project, so. I don't have to issue it and we can commission it.
And and Mr. Solari and I have had this conversation too, because oftentimes people will come to his office before they come to our office and they might, you know, look at existing zoning and say, okay, we can't do that. And, you know, Steve and I have agreed that that's the case. Send them to my office, you know, we'll figure out. I mean, if there's a way to do it and it makes sense for the community, then we should try to do it. If it doesn't make sense and it's not consistent with what the community wants, then we'll share that and why. But I think, you know, you've got some examples, you know, particularly around student housing that aren't in the best interest of the community. And I I don't think we want to continue to do that.
All right, Mr. Really, anybody else before we turn it over to Mr. O'Brien for rules and regs?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item four in the agenda, Mr. O'Brien, the rules and regulations update.
Howdy, everyone. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to provide a quick update to the board. So I did provide. So I just want to make two comments on our progress on the rules and regulations as well as through my planner's report, suggest to the board having a special meeting in late March for a to wrap all these rules and regulations up if the board chooses to do so. But I want to kind of touch base on one of the items we discussed at one of the last meetings in terms of curbing and just some of the issues that I've kind of faced, looking at or doing some research on our curbing. So as of currently, we do have certain layouts within our subdivision rules and regulations that doesn't make it as easy as we previously discussed on requesting that every applicant come in with granite curbing as our layout sheets really kind of specifically say for our minor arterials, industrial, commercial ways. So in our minor arterial, industrial, commercial roads, we have certain layouts with a sixty-foot right of way. And there'll be some corrections in the rules and regs as well in terms of, so we have a fifty-foot layout as well that we spell out in our rules and regulations. But in terms of certain residential roads that we're requesting granite curbing on, we require granite curbing as of right now for fifty units plus. But our our typical roadway layout for anything less than fifty units does include Cape Cod berm on this forty-foot right of way. And that exists all the way down to eleven and nineteen residential units as well, all the way down to five to ten. So anything between five and forty-nine residential units as of this time. An applicant would be coming in based on this roadway layout.
I think I think what I, when I brought this up, I think that you know, obviously, one to one to four units, there's no sidewalks.
Correct. And I I think there's there's going to be no changes to our one to four unit.
Right. And I don't think we need to get rid of the monolithic berm altogether. I think that that when I had mentioned it and done some research and just being in a six-lot neighborhood with the monolithic berm and the sidewalks are basically useless because people park on the sidewalks. I I think that, you know, I I think what I what I see as the best practice anyways, at least on the sidewalk, there's the, at least, at least, you know, the sidewalk has the vertical granite curb and maybe some of the throats in the radius. But you know, if we wanted to keep the monolithic berm on the non-sidewalk side, I think that's fine. And that's what I was looking to do is just change the the detail on the smaller neighborhood. I think we found that it really is a crappy sidewalk and you just have a three-inch, you know, gradual monolithic berm.
Somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we go from concrete to the Cape Cod berm because of things like weeds growing up between the asphalt?
We went from sloped vertical granite on both sides because of the maintenance.
Right.
And I think, I think in talking to Azu and looking around, you know, other towns do it. The vertical granite is more is more expensive than the the vertical granite is more expensive than sloped.
Yep.
There's really no maintenance on it because you don't get that thin layer of asphalt over the over the edge of the over the edge of the model, over the edge of the the sloped granite.
I've noticed that the small subdivision next to our house, which there's only four houses back there, has sloped. It constantly gets weeds sticking up between the asphalt and the granite. Every 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 summer you get weeds growing there. Just coming.
Yep. My neighborhood, my neighborhood, the same way, right? We have we have sloped granite and it's on both sides of the road and it's great. And when the weeds grow, we pick them and we have.
I know. I'm not saying we should go back to slope. I'm saying we should go to the thicker vertical. And I think that's also a lot of problems.
I just blame homeowners associations. It's so much easier. If you just look in the, if these people just look into their covenant, they can check that that pulling weeds is their responsibility or they pay thirty dollars more a year.
Town's responsibility in this case.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I guess.
Just just like, just like it's a town's responsibility to clean detention basins and they don't do it. We collect money for it.
I will leave that up to the town to comment. But in terms of this discussion, looking at allowance for vertical granite curbing currently in our layout sheets, if we're going to ask for vertical granite curbing, then our layout sheet should kind of reflect that as well, because it doesn't make sense for us to ask for something and then someone comes down. And I'll be honest, you know, talking about developable land in the town, I don't think we're going to see a lot of fifty-plus unit subdivisions in the town. So a lot of the subdivisions that we're going to be seeing in the future probably one to four or that four plus. But if we're looking for that range of that five to forty-nine and we're looking for having vertical granite curbing, we would have to adjust our layouts. And unfortunately for us, we do have some references with some plans. This is from the, actually a forty B project, Duckspur Estates. And not to say it's the perfect project by any means. That's the zoning board's determination. But we do have references to forty-foot layouts with a five-inch vertical granite. References to uh forty foot layouts with a five inch vertical granite curbing. One of which is a Pratt Ave, um, which includes sidewalk on one side. Um, as well as um a different portion of Pratt Ave of a forty foot layout. Um, so I just wanted to bring this to the board's attention. There's some, there's a twenty six inch pavement widths as well as some twenty four. Inch pavement with that. We do have examples based on a previous approvals, not necessarily. Planning board, um, but of roadway layouts of forty uh feet. That includes vertical granite curb, albeit sidewalk on one side. So I just wanted to present this to the board as a consideration as part of this. Uh, my focus primarily is not that fifty plus, but primarily that forty nine and five unit. And to create a a consistent layout or um what I called kind of. That hotspot of subdivisions that we may see in the future in getting that vertical granite curb and getting proper sidewalk. And having enough pavement width that um satisfies uh two way traffic. And I I know, I think we include as part of some of these subdivisions currently right now. Bicycle lanes for forty between, I think, the twenty and forty nine units. I I don't know what really the feasibility of it is, as well as if you can show me a subdivision that has a bike lane on it in the town. Uh, I'd be happy to give you an award, uh, because I I can't think of any right now.
I think that. And we can, you know, I think we should get Greg Tansy's input as well as the DPW director, but. I don't, you know, I don't even know if we needed the throats or the other radio. I see a lot of towns do it. With the monolithic berm, I don't really understand why. Maybe Greg can explain that, but I think. I think it was trying to create.
And using everything else, it's just the the sidewalks of the monolithic berm, so. It it's basically just an extension of the road. And and what happens is people don't, people probably have to walk around the town. I mean, I see it, I see it everywhere. So I'm hoping that. One, I think the vertical ground looks better on the sidewalk. It's more durable, you don't have to pull anything from the sidewalk. It makes it safer for pedestrians. That's that's really why, right? After having it in my neighborhood, I'm like, wow, this this model of the berm for sidewalks, thanks.
Yeah, and and it's and there's a lot of concern as well, I think, too, from, I I think my viewpoint too is we we've seen a lot of projects that people built. And they build it on private ways and we have concerns about the adequacy of the road. And you know, typically the board waits five years for or a recommendation that uh. Road is accepted as a public way, and we just want to make sure that these roads are up to. A a standard that the board seems fit as well as. Um, when we take over these roads that we're not having crumbling infrastructure for, you know, from plows and salt and. Just time in general, because we have some older subdivisions that, you know, we have in town that, you know. Are aging not as not like a fine wine. So I I just want to kind of point this out um to the board if there's any questions and comments, and I'm happy to have additional conversations with the DPW. Um, but it's just that we have the discussion about including vertical granite curbing at uh one of the previous meetings. And I just want to make sure that if if we want to pursue that through these rules and regulation changes is that. This also includes layout changes within the appendices in our rules and regulations, so. Ducks Borough Estates is an example of forty foot layouts that do include vertical grab, vertical granite curbing that we um. We have on certain plans, uh, but I just want to kind of. Point this out to the board if that's still a consideration that we should pursue. Um, by uh looking at layout plans of of this size um for. Uh, residential units five to to forty nine.
I just have a technical question, uh, probably for Pat, actually. I I tried to to look it up and figure out mo- a monolithic berm, that's where the blacktop just comes up and humps over onto the sidewalks. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, Greg Tansy is probably the one for the technical question on that, but. It's it's basically just, I think it's about six inches wide and three, three or four inches higher. That's about it.
And it's just a blacktop in the road coming up onto the sidewalk.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yes, a a monolithic berm is typically. Um, a Cape Cod berm and it's it's actually. Constructed along with the the base and the top course of the uh of the roadway. When the paver is is paving the road, the end of that spreader is angled up. And it creates that that Cape Cod berm and it's it's one. With the the top course and it's one with the the binder course, and that's why they call it a monolithic uh berm. And one of the advantage of that is it is a durable berm. And it's it's typically about twelve inches wide and at least three inches high.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And that's what we do have in our layout. Right as Greg described, that's what we currently ask for for um all 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 projects of five units. It's a forty nine units for a subdivision. So so when building five houses, that's what they're uh building unless they're requesting waivers. So um if anyone else has any questions or comments in terms of uh looking to pursue this. I just want to kind of have some guidance from the board's perspective if if. The current state of affairs for subdivisions is fine. Um, or if we want to look at um changing that layout for uh looking at vertical granite curbing.
But I mean, I think we got an opinion from uh the DPW director as well as the.
Yeah, I'm happy to talk to Greg about this because I I haven't really discussed this particular um. Issue with him yet, uh, but I'm happy to um discuss it with him either this week or next.
I mean, I don't want to go against DPW, but I think that it just makes a much better sidewalk, that's all.
Sure. And like I said, this, I'm not taking something from a different community. This is what has been approved. In certain aspects of forty B projects for Dexborough Estate, so I'm just taking. Certain roadway widths and roadway design. For projects that aren't necessarily subdivisions, but per se built uh within the town of Bridgewater uh on certain road weights.
Anything else, Mr. O'Brien?
And additionally to, um, I did provide a fee, uh, an updated fee schedule um as well. Um, looking over the zoning ordinance is uh the update. Um, there are certain fees that we don't necessarily consider at this time. As well as having a conversation with Bob and and staff about. Uh, certain projects that we've kind of had before us that. There's been concerns, I I know from a a board perspective, concerns about um size of buildings and types of buildings. Um, that's come before the board and part of these fee schedules I sent over to the board um a couple days ago. Um, for your consideration is looking at not only just impervious surfaces for. The part of this fee schedule, because as of right now. You know, for all site plans, their review is, your review is, and the fee is based on the amount of impervious surface created. But also the gross square footage of a building. Um, which is part of the review for site plan review. So any construction of a building or an extension of a building. We should look at um what I'm considering and what the board should can consider as well is to. Essentially create a fee based on. The gross square footage of a construction of a building in addition to the impervious area. Because as of right now, we can only do that from a special permitting perspective and and a lot of projects that we see before the board. Are permitted by right through site plan review. So it's looking at projects like nine hundred Bedford Street. Um, a Jasmine Way or other projects that we've seen in the past and and look at the gross square foot. Area and try to capture some of the revenue that we may not necessarily capture um based on the size of the building. Um, so part of that's there, including a fee for um limited site plan review. Um, let me actually pull that up um right now. We can just briefly discuss it. I I don't want to go too long. I know it's uh. Getting late. But I I I and I have just kind of sent this over to the board recently. As of Tuesday, so. I just want to make sure I'm saying all the correct things. I'm not, i- in terms of also other fees, I'm not touching anything in terms of uh. Our our current subdivision fees, uh, they are what they are, but it's more focusing on. A site plan review and some of the changes that have occurred since the uh the update to the zoning ordinances, so. Looking at. You know, and our plans, no changes there. Gateway Business District and East Gateway Business Design Review, uh, this is another element that I'm going to have to. I'll have an update to the rules and regulations, but um in our current, in our zoning ordinances, we do reference. A design review, so I did want to associate a fee with that, and I also have to um. As part of our rules and regulations, really establish what a design review for this East Gateway Business District is because. Um, if there is a project that is proposed in that area. In our zoning, it does reference that there is some sort of site plan review element um as well, so.
I think I think we need to incorporate that in our rules and regs. Is that correct?
That is correct. So that will be, that would be something that I'd be including um. Um, prior to uh our special meeting and I'm hoping to get to the board, um, hopefully this week. My goal tomorrow is to look over designed review elements. But also looking at section three uses, which was included with your limited site plans, having a financial means to charge someone, because. As much as I can, you know, when someone comes up to me and says, I'm going to apply for this, I don't want to be. Just kind of looking around going, it's about, you know, I'm not trying to do a bartering system here. Or I, you know, we're not a flea market, you know, the number is the number. But in in terms of additions, uh, looking at parking lot. Construction as one element of major site plan review as well as new construction. Um, for another element, and that includes municipal, industrial, institutional. Uh, and residential for two plus. Uh, and then taking in, changing kind of the numbers for special permitting and looking at. You know, nothing changes with a professional review fee, but associating the um. The cost of site plan review in over twenty five thousand gross square feet to uh six cents per square foot over twenty five hundred. And um associating that with the site plan review process. Whereas special permits, we would eliminate that and just have a a flat fee of eight hundred dollars per special permits and modifications. Um, because we we've had certain projects appear before us that it doesn't really make sense. From a special permitting perspective and as well as these zoning ordinance changes, is it's difficult to associate special permits. With a a cost per square feet, whereas most projects that all construction is going to come before us. Will be a site plan review. That's no ifs, ands, or buts, but not every project that appears before us is a special permit. Um, so looking at something like a two ten Broad Street, if they were looking for. Off street parking, it would be that flat fee of eight hundred dollars, um, which doesn't really change anything because that's the number it was before. And that's the number it would be regardless. And then if someone's looking for additional subsequent special permits, it would be two hundred dollars. Per after everyone and then two hundred dollars for any special permit filed with a site plan review. Um, but we can eliminate, modify any of these if the board wants to, but this is just. Looking at other uh towns and communities as well as um placing a a number. With an extension of time for site plan review or special permit, you know, it it's a lot of communities require that an applicant pays a fee. Um, for that extension, so I would just add that as well. But, you know, I'm not looking for any comments or, you know. But I'm happy to answer any questions regarding this um at this time, but, you know, being that I sent it on Tuesday, I just kind of want the board to digest. Some of these numbers and I'm happy to um answer some questions and uh provide.
I just, I just want to add that, you know, I appreciate Shane taking the initiative on this and, you know, agree that. This doesn't need any further conversation tonight, and I think it warrants a a special meeting, but I think it's consistent with. You know, if we're going in a different direction or we're evolving in terms of how we're dealing with development. Then these are conversations that we need to have. I mean, I I've sat in the eight weeks I've been here, I've sat in meetings where people now said. Bridgewater is not developer friendly. Well, I'm not sure what that means, but you know, it's, I I. I I'm very fortunate to have Shane on on staff because he took the initiative on this and I think it's it's. It's a it's a necessary conversation that we have to have.
Yeah, and I I also think it's just an opportunity, like I'll reiterate kind of what I said earlier, it's an opportunity for lost revenue because we look at a project like. Nine hundred Bedford Street and the fee was based on the parking lot, not the project itself. And that ended at two thousand, so we're looking with our current fee schedule, the building area didn't matter. For the fee, it was the parking lot. Um, so I I just want to look at that element of. You know, opportunities of revenue and especially if we're getting projects of that size and a lot of contractor bays and. Um, we want to be able to have fees that reflect. The building sizes and have it make more sense than what we currently have, because I I think there's an opportunity for some um. Uh, more revenue from a fee schedule perspective as well as, you know. For certain projects allowing for more sensible fees uh in the future.
So Shane, when when this last fee schedule came out. Um, we always had. Private consultants that worked for the town. And Mr. Antinero and uh Mrs. DeBohram and um Mr. Dotner, basically presented us this fee schedule. Based on, I guess, some sort of forecast as to what they thought would be coming in annually for development. And and to make sure that these fees from a design review perspective would cover that cost of the. Of the town engineer, so. Um, I'm fine with the change. I guess my question is, is this going to, is this going to increase revenue or decrease revenue overall, do you think?
Uh, I would say that it would increase rev- uh, you know, I'm not, I can't forecast, you know, projections, but. Like I said, with certain projects that are coming before the board. Or pro- projects that had come before the board, like nine hundred Bedford Street or any projects that are. Essentially new construction that are by right. You're not capturing that revenue of the building size, you know, it's only when a special permit comes before the board. And you know, the last time we saw a special permit come before the board was for two ten Broad Street. And there was no new construction, it was simply a change in use. And with something like an eighty six Spring Street, that was another one that was the last special permit before that. Um, so you know, this board is seeing a lot more site plan reviews. Um, and I think that a fee should be based on. The gross square footage of the buildings as well as the impervious surface. So we're not getting rid of the impervious surface. Um, which was initially proposed, we're just reducing that number and then also placing a number on the. New construction as expansion of buildings as well, just to to capture revenue as well as to kind of reflect. You know, some of the review fee process, uh, whether it be through engineering or staff time, because. We care what's in the building, on the exterior of the building, and we also do have. More standards, performance standards for review. But since twenty eighteen with the new zoning ordinance changes, there is much more to review. And I think that revenue and the fees should reflect that.
I would just add to that, Pat, that, you know, if, you know, if in fact we're going down the road of form-based code. You know, there should be, you know, some fees associated to projects within that. And we we had a budget meeting today and I I was shocked that like, you know, we're talking about expenses, but. Is anybody talking about how much money my department brings in?
But but with this increase, we're still competitive to surrounding towns.
Correct. I, for some of the numbers, and like I said, there there's, we do have a number right now for special permits that's twenty five cents per square foot, which is. Extensively more higher than a a lot of communities in the area, so there is that number for. Square footage increase uh over twenty five thousand, it would be associated with six cents per square foot afterwards, because. You know, if you kind of do the math on some projects, like say example, nine hundred Bedford Street, twenty five square. Twenty five cents per square foot over that would make the the planning permit fee. Just totally in feasible. It would, you're talking a hundred thousand dollar fee, which uh from, you know, it would be great, but they would never pay it. It it's creating fees that are sensible for us to get to receive and also for developers to pay.
This is a building, two hundred thousand square feet, that'd be fifty grand.
Yes, but do you, would you, would you think they would pay fifty grand?
They've paid twenty twenty grand for trees. It wasn't required either. It wasn't required either.
Right, it, I'm, I'm making, my biggest thing is making sure that we've got it. You know, within our fee schedule and our rules and regulations for uh. Whatever we're gonna capture before they even come to us and I, I just want to make sure that. The fees are sensible and then we're capturing revenue based on the uh, the extensive uh. Research and review that we're uh, trying to provide to the town. So, if anyone has any que- questions, sorry.
All right. So do you want to schedule that meeting now, Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I was in the planner report, um. So if, if the board is able to, I'm hoping to have a, uh, you know, a public meeting uh, for March twenty ninth. Um, to kind of have a, a, just talk about this project, have it, you know, a public hearing and. You know, iron out everything, I'll have a presentation and we can look. I don't want necessarily go line by line, but just based on the changes I would like to provide and. Any board comments and public comments, um, part of that, um, but I'm happy to provide some. And uh, I would say a final draft at the next meeting and then. So we don't have to go into a situation at the last meet or that special meeting where. You know, we're conditioning on this, conditioning on that, conditioning on that, so, um, but. You know, um, I'm hoping to have a special meeting on the twenty ninth to get at least, you know. Ninety-nine percent of uh, some of the updates approved uh, before the board.
All right, great, thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
No problem. And I think we have. Oh, um, so that's that and then uh, for other business too, um, the. The Citizen Planning Training Collaborative Conference is next Saturday, actually no, um, two Saturdays from now, March eighteenth. Um, in Worcester, I did provide a, a list of attendance, um, as well as. Um, speakers and. Uh, other, um, the times of certain things, um, it's in Worcester at Holy Cross, I think I've mentioned a couple of times. Um, so just let us know if you're interested in attending, um, I do not believe I will be attending. Um, but I will let you guys know closer to that date. Uh, but if you have any questions about that or if you're interested in going, please let us know.
Somebody, somebody wants to attend, we'll cover your tuition. Not your room and board, but your tuition.
Not your commuter rail travel either.
Um, those. The, is, so if anybody's interested in that CPC conference, let Shane know. I'm gonna be out of time that day, I'd love to go, but unfortunately I can't.
St. Patrick's Day weekend is a tough week.
Do you want to schedule it? Is, is everybody in the board okay? We changed proposed meeting from March twenty ninth, is that okay? Can it be scheduled?
Is that also a Wednesday?
It is a Wednesday, yes. And I just want to reiterate, we only have one meeting in April, April nineteenth, so. We'd have three, three meetings in uh, March.
Is everybody, any objections to that meeting on uh, March twenty ninth?
You're gonna pay us the same what we get paid for these meetings?
Same rate, Steve. Any board committee reports? I was unable to attend, I was away uh, last week for school vacation, but I guess the um. CPC committee met and um, the one thing they're considering is uh, two lots uh, down next to the Styles and Hat. Uh, where there are billboards that would be removed if the town purchase those and they'd add that to, to the, to the Styles and Hat property for parking. Uh, we received the wetland delineation to see if the lots were worth the uh. Or is offering to us for, and we asked for a bond calculation from the town manager, which I got an update that he's working. And I believe they approved some uh, freeze money um, for some freezes that were on the McKellane School that are gonna be um. Utilized in the um, academy building. Again, I was, I was not at the meeting, but. Knowing we had a meeting tonight, I called uh, Dr. Hunt today, who's the vice chairman, and he gave me the update. Anybody else, committee reports?
And just one more note, I guess, from the planners' report, um, I did receive a check from Eric Costa. Um, for Lot Two, so um, I just need, I'm gonna get the uh, the lot, um. Notarized, um, as well as they received in Nashville plans, I'm just waiting on a homeowners association note from him. Um, prior to uh, CEO of the first property, but I did receive a check for Lot Two. Um, for the proper amount and I will provide. Once it's notarized, a copy to the town clerk and the treasurer's office in order to establish an account. But that is all for me.
Okay, before Mr. O'Brien has anything else for us to be.
So moved.
I'm tired. Bye, Mr. McDonald.
We need a second.
Have a second, everyone wants to stay? Hi, Mr. Jimmy. Any discussion? Remember Ross?
Yeah.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Definitely.
Good night, everybody, thank you.
Night, everyone.
Everyone.